Agreed to come up and lead us in our pledge. So, Delilah, if you'll come up and join us. Delilah, all you gotta do is say two words and we'll get you going from there. You ready? Okay, say, "I pledge."
I pledge.
We lead the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Delilah.
Thank you, Delilah. Job, job.
Help me, God.
Thank you so much. We also have joining us tonight Kin Woman from the Charlestown First Methodist Church to lead our education. I'll call in four. Thank you for being with us tonight.
Thank you for letting me make the third time the charge. Gracious heavenly Father, we thank you for this night, that we as a body and a community and an organization can make plans to make this town a service to you. Give this body your wisdom and your strength to make plans to follow your will and understand what direction you have for us. Lead us tonight and evermore in Jesus' name, amen.
Thank you, thank you. We'll have our roll call. District one, Bo Gertrum.
Here.
District two, Ruthie Jackson. Here. District three, B.J. Steele.
Here.
Let the record show, B.J. Steele is joining us via Zoom. For this reason, all votes tonight will have to be a roll call vote. District four, Brian Hester.
Here.
And at large, J.T. Cox.
Here.
Let the record show that Mayor Hodges and Court Pedro Donahue are present, as well as all three of our attorneys tonight. Council Attorney Michael Yellawater, City Attorney, hearing recall, and the Sir of Worthrings joining us tonight, Beau Zeller. We have an agenda that's been provided. Entertain a motion to approve.
Some move.
I have a motion from J.T. Cox. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Brian Hester. Any edits or questions? Hearing none. All in favor of the agenda. We need to do that by roll call vote. Almost messed it up again. So, we do roll call vote. J.T. Cox.
Aye.
Ruthie Jackson.
Aye.
Brian Hester.
Aye.
Bo Gertrum.
Aye.
And B.J. Steele.
Aye, aye.
That is unanimous. We've been provided a copy of the prior meeting minutes from January 4th, 2023. The current claims, which I need to read an additional claim into the record today. This is from American Legal Publishing. A 50% payment for the codification of the ordinances and resolutions. The amount is $3,689.83. So, that amount would be added to the claims. And then your payroll allowance docket from December 26th, '22 to January 22nd, '23. Entertain a motion to approve. I have a motion from Brian Hester. Seconded by Ruthie Jackson. Any questions? All in favor? I'm sorry. Had it. Do roll call vote. Bo Gertrum.
Aye.
Ruthie Jackson. Aye. B.J. Steele.
Aye, aye.
Brian Hester.
Aye.
J.T. Cox.
Aye.
That is unanimously approved. Thank you. That's gotta be a hard habit to learn. We've done a lot of it. All right. Under public comments, we have one person who has signed up. Frank Glover from 464 Harrison Street, apartment 3.
Please fire me up. My name is Frank Glover, also known as Frank Walden. I live at 464 Harrison Street, apartment 3. Before I dive into this, nobody has asked me to come up and speak. I don't have any financial incentive involved with Rouch. I'm not a candidate for office, even though there's an election and I'm not here to represent any candidate. But I do study economics at IUS, focusing on geospatial analysis and urban economics, which is basically why do cities happen and why do economies happen where they do. So, going back to the point of my address, that's 464 Harrison Street, apartment 3. Triplex, though, is a house that is one of the oldest houses in town. And it adds quite a bit of character to the surrounding neighborhood. And so, what a duplex is, is just two units within a house. And so, triplex, quadriplex, those don't have the same amount of impact as something much larger that needs a large parking lot does. So, like a 20-plus apartment complex that has been approved recently. So, going to this point, I'm using information from the U.S. Census Bureau, as well as from the recent growth summit. Here on the screen, we have the median home price from 2015 to 2022 in the top right. In seven years, the average median income, or average median house price has basically doubled. Whereas the median household during that same time is in the blue from 2015 to 2021, has only increased 35%. And then, because I'm a conservative with a finance degree, I like to use some Dave Ramsey budgeting, because that also gives you some extra discretionary income to spend on your day-to-day expenses, which means spending on local businesses. So, if you would, could you? Thank you. So, using this, and here are the inputs that I used. Gross income of $82,500 is what's required to purchase a house at our current median income. Now, if we go to the next slide, we see a breakdown of where our income brackets are. And so, Rouch is targeting single households making $18,000 to $35,000 a year and four-person households making $25,000 to $50,500 a year. And if we look at that target range that I've got in green, this is from, yeah, this is the Census Bureau that I collected personally. So, $15,000 to about $50,000 makes up 29% of our households. And this is estimated data, so it's not exact. And then, here from the growth summit, I have broken this down again. So, $20,000 to $50,000 down in the bottom left in the green. We can see that that's 24% of the population falls in this Rouch's target demographic. Let's see. So, I personally don't make the median income, but I'm also above this. And I too would benefit from increased supply of housing availability. As demand, or as supply increases, it decreases the price. So, that's just supply and demand. Let me go to the next up. So, going back to that point, the key takeaway being that our median households cannot afford our median homes. How then are citizens expected to get ahead in life or pull themselves up by their bootstraps when they are so monumentally priced out of their own community? Housing costs are perhaps the biggest expense of any citizen within Charlestown. And I think the growth summit also went into that as well. And anything we can do to help reduce those costs without outright funding it ourselves should always be considered. The next point is, one of the concepts that we study in economics is that a decrease in living expenses leads to an increase in demand for labor. Because if your waiter or cashier that's making $35,000 a year or less is unable to afford their cost of living, they necessitate a higher wage or they leap. And if the companies can't pay that, then they have to leap. And so, if our cost of living was lower, companies would not need to increase wages and afford to hire more of our workers. Additionally, the town square and Greenway Park, along with various businesses that surround them, are reliant on local patrons to succeed. And which is to say that if we add more people near the core of our town, the more likely we are to see new options in restaurants and services, which has been a calling cry for a lot of people in Charlestown. The reason I put this one up here is to show the distance. Now, I know that Rouch has a focus towards some disabilities. And so, even that, we've got sidewalks for most of that and it's a 10-minute walk. And so, that's not much further if there's somebody who's like in a wheelchair or some other mode of assistance. Now, the last part is gonna be using Elevate. So, this is Clark County's GIS, which is geographic information software or service system. And I broke this down. So, I was using the parcels here, which are the two in the top right, which are blue, and the yellow one, which make, we collect a total property tax revenue of $775.86 per year, which comes out to about $334 per acre. Now, if we compare that to the almost acres' worth of other homes that are along Thompson Street within Pleasant Ridge, and so, a lot of these are older houses. We can see that those lots along Thompson Street produce tax revenues of about $1,090.75. And that's, that's almost near, like 0.99. So, if these are added, it will change the amount of property tax income that we see. And down at the bottom right here, I've got that even at the rate of those houses along Thompson Street, the development would bring in about $2,530 per year, which is $1,750 more in our city budget. And that's been a common concern. And so, how do you raise revenues without increasing taxes? It's through development. And now, this is just an estimate. I imagine that duplexes being added in that are brand-new will probably be higher. And then, I also don't know how HUD stats might affect that, so that might be another question for the council. But that is all that I had for you. Thank you for letting me speak. If you have any questions, I'd have to answer.
Thank you. And we have our legislative vice advisor, Ethan Biggs, from Fort.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
So, this past weekend, we had the Charlestown Wrestling Regionals at Jeffersonville. We had Malachi Rios placed runner-up in the 220-pound weight class. Brayden Moore placed first place at Regionals at the 160-pound weight class. And then Carson Collier placed fourth in the 113-pound weight class, which is qualifying all three of them to move on to state finals or semi-state for wrestling, sorry. Kendall Gogel and Rayland Blackstone moved on to sectional finals for swimming in the 100-yard breaststroke. Did we have those yet? I didn't see anything.
I think they're coming out. They wore this dress week.
And then, the CHS choir participated in the ISS NA solo and ensemble contest at Floyd Central a couple weeks ago. We had Micah Marling and Taylor May both placed gold. And then, Michael Nattenger, Skylar Green, Chloe Probst, and Isabella Spencer all placed gold and are moving on to the state finals. Charlestown Bowling made it to the state finals, as well as Alexa Eskamill and Gerald Nelson making it as individual. Malachi Rios was ranked the Baptist Athlete of the Week for, between all of his accomplishments in football and wrestling this year. Charlestown hosted our basketball homecoming last month and announces queen, we had Lainey Hawkins and our king was Jake Arisback. 2019 CHS alumni, Darren Pierce, broke a world record for the Guinness Book. He made the world's largest gluten-free pizza at 14,000 square feet. You guys have any questions?
How good was the food?
It looks good. I don't know. It was pretty big, though.
Thank you. Under, for mayor's comments, we have a lot of parks activities and things coming up, so those will be going up on our calendar. Of course, always happy to provide information about any of those things coming up. We're getting into the season. We've had kind of that winter break from, from the Christmas stuff and they're getting ready to kick everything into gear. So, looking forward to that. I did wanna make a note about the request that I'm making tonight to the council for appropriation of last year's savings. Last year, off of the general fund, we were able to save $278,000. And as a part of the appropriation request tonight, I've given you, is in the memo described from January 19th. I'm asking that those funds be appropriate for improvements at Greenway Park. The bulk of which would go to match the funding for the grant that we received from the foundation of Southern Indiana to fund an accessible playground. I think it's important to note that this was a decision that was made up of a lot of factors citywide. We've been working on the Parks Master Plan since 2020 with the idea of accessibility and improving parks and everything comprehensively as a whole. And this goes even further back than that to 2019, when pocket parks were going in. And Councilman Hester, you yourself once asked, you know, can we put in an accessible playground? And so, these are things that have been in the works. And I think this is a wonderful opportunity for us to do something great for the community and stand together down at that park in a few months with members of our community who would most be, you know, able to use that park now, when they weren't able to use it before. I'm hoping that the council and I will be able to stand on it together soon and cut that ribbon and open this up for our community. Why Greenway Park? That was the oldest playground equipment we have. And when we were looking at replacing the equipment, I put out two requests, a direct replacement, if that's often what we could get it, and then apply to this grant, crossed our fingers, and hoped that we would be able to do something bigger. So, this is just the start of what I hope will become a pattern, where when we replace park equipment, we do so with accessibility in mind as we move forward in the entire community, looking for ways to make our community welcome to people of all ability levels, so that people can feel safe here, that they feel like there's a sense of community living, regardless of their ability level, healthy lifestyle, that they're socially integrated. And so, this is the start of what I hope will continue. And we're making sure that we're taking steps to look at development in the future with that eye. So, I'm happy to answer any questions about that and looking forward again to being able to celebrate this as a city. So, those are, those are my comments. And I would open it for her council comments as well. We have the public hearings, so moving on to ordinances and resolutions. Well, I thought we remembered we have to do roll call votes, because I will forget. First up is ordinance 2023 OR 1. This is an amendment to ordinance 2016 OR 19 zoning ordinance that was tabled at our last meeting. This is amending the exterior building materials for R1, R2 properties, as well as clarifying the building size of multi-story properties. So, I will entertain a motion to approve, 2023 OR 1. I have a motion for Brian Hester.
Second.
Second by Bo Gertrum. Any questions or discussion? Can we get B.J. back on the screen? So, we can see him as well through him.
Yeah, he has to do that. That's on his end.
Okay, thank you. Any questions or discussion?
Something you can address if this is everything good?
Yes, I actually, when we went over it, then it was then reviewed by the city attorney and the council's attorney. And I think it's a pretty good ordinance, a pretty good condition to it.
All right. We'll do roll call vote. Bo Gertrum.
Aye.
Ruthie Jackson.
Aye.
B.J. Steele.
Aye.
Brian Hester.
Aye.
J.T. Cox.
Aye.
So, I have unanimous approval. Being that it is unanimous approval, I would entertain a motion to suspend the rules in anticipation of having the second and final reading on this evening's table. I have a motion by Ruthie Jackson.
Second.
Seconded by J.T. Cox. Questions on the suspension of the rules? And none, so this will be a roll call vote. You all bear with me. Bo Gertrum.
Aye.
Aye. B.J. Steele.
Aye, aye.
Brian Hester.
Aye.
J.T. Cox.
Aye.
So, that's unanimous. So, then we'll call for the second and final reading of the amended zoning ordinance. I have a motion from Brian Hester. Ah, second. Second by Ruthie Jackson. Any questions? Hearing none. Roll call again. Bo Gertrum.
Aye.
Ruthie Jackson.
Aye.
B.J. Steele.
Aye, aye.
Brian Hester.
Aye.
J.T. Cox.
Aye.
So, that's unanimous. That was approved. Thank you. Moving on to ordinance 2023 OR 2. This is an ordinance pertaining to checks over two years old. Will you entertain a motion to approve? I have a motion by Ruthie Jackson.
Second.
Seconded by J.T. Cox. Questions? When that money just goes right, stays right in that fund, right?
Wherever that check was written down at, that check will be voided and the money will be put back into that fund.
Any other questions? Call in for roll call vote. Bo Gertrum.
Aye.
Ruthie Jackson. And B.J. Steele.
Aye, aye.
Brian Hester.
Aye.
J.T. Cox.
Aye.
So, that's unanimous. Bear with me, but I'll entertain a motion to suspend the rules in anticipation of reading on second reading tonight. I have a motion for Brian Hester. Seconded by Ruthie Jackson. Questions on that? Roll call vote. Bo Gertrum.
Aye.
Ruthie Jackson. Aye. B.J. Steele. We lost him.
He's still there. Yeah, he muted himself. Say his name one more time.
B.J., can you hear us? We can see you. We need your vote on suspending the rules on ordinance 2. He said he did that.
Thumbs up?
You just have to have an ID, then. Okay, well, we can do it, we can do it with the ones we have. It'd be great to, yeah. Yeah, he's gotta be over here and see. Visually, we have discontent, but we'll still have majority on this too. Brian Hester.
Aye.
J.T. Cox.
Aye.
Still, we're still majority. So, we'll have the second and final reading. I can hear them again. Okay. Second and final reading. You have a motion. Make that motion. I have a motion by Ruthie Jackson. Seconded by Brian Hester. Questions? None. Roll call vote. Bo Gertrum.
Aye.
Ruthie Jackson. Aye. B.J. Steele.
Aye.
Brian Hester.
Aye.
J.T. Cox.
Aye.
Ruthie, unanimous. Thank you. I have a ton of questions. Ordinance 2023 OR 3. This is the appropriation request for improvements at Greenway Park in the amount of $278,476. City maintenance, this was from the auction, correct?
Yes.
Yes, we're putting the money back into the funds from which the auction proceeds. $102,568.10. And then, the city vehicle fleet in the amount of $116,335.77. That is money that was previously appropriated in 20, that was savings from 2021. That was appropriated in 2022 for the purchase of police cars. The cars did not come in, so we have to reappropriate the money. And there's been discussion, I believe, a couple of council members have sat in about potentially doing leasing vehicles in order to get more vehicles in that process. And have you answered any questions about that? The appropriation is for. And then, from the American Rescue Plant, wastewater treatment plant, $1,013,93 dollars came into city services, $5,419. So, I will entertain a motion to approve. I have a motion for Brian Hester. Is there a second? Seconded by Ruthie Jackson. Any questions?
Yes, comment, question. The $278.46, I, I think we definitely need to appropriate the $150,000. It's a matching grant, correct?
Correct. So, $150,000 is for the matching grant. And $50,000 is for the installation of fencing and solar lighting. One of the major requests we received from parents of young children, especially some parents who have children that are young and have autism, are concerned about making sure the playground is secured by a fence. It also reduces the chance of vandalism, because it will be on a timed block for daytime hours. And then, the solar lighting, of course, provides lighting to deter that as well. So, that's the $200,000. And then, the $78,000 that was remainder would go to, towards the engineering design for shoring of the creek that is currently washing out the Dubcoin Pavilion. The pavilion is in very dangerous position to be washed out. The creek is a thin bend and the bed is washing out beneath it. And we need to get that repaired as quickly as possible. So, that's what the total of the, of the money would go for.
I'm in the grounds for the $150,000 for the match, because I don't think we can pass that up. Just in my opinion, I think we need to hold off on the other two just to look at the budget. I think there's some places in parks where maybe we can take out some of that for the lighting and fencing. And then, we're still waiting on our numbers for our sewer plant. And that's a huge concern for me is, you know, for that sewer plant. So, if we have that, that's a lot of money to have in reserve. And that $28,000, we might be able to use towards our sewer plant and things we're gonna need for that. Because I think right now, that's our biggest need right now, is to make sure that we have the funding and we do a check on that. But I think it's, $300,000 is great for the park. Maybe with some tweaking or something, you can even fit in the $50,000 for the lighting and fencing. And, you know, looking at our budget a little more through the Parks Department.
Well, this does reflect savings from the general fund. So, this is money that, you know, is just left over from careful spending throughout 2022. So, there's, there are still other sources available and other obligations being met for funds. And so, we're not outing things by spending this money. And these are all, these are all direct needs that have been identified. The $150 is great to match the playground. We don't want to lose this grant. At the same time, that's only a piece of, and we really need to make sure that the fencing and the lighting go up simultaneously with, and since we know we have the funds available, it makes sense to go ahead and appropriate and have that lined up. And again, I wanna stress that pavilion. And Tony can speak on this if you need more feedback on that pavilion, if you would like, because he's been working with the engineering team to work towards those solutions. But I'm, it is incredibly precarious how close that washout has gotten. And we are in danger of losing the pavilion at this point.
I'll just let you guys know, we've been going down there. If we have a really hard spring again, right now, the cut is about two feet from there. The electric panel itself, I'm gonna have to move, because it's within eight inches of the panel falling in. But that, it's just such a big bend. We worked on it, oh, I guess it was about seven years ago, when it started to have issues. And the engineering firm, the Sagasters, they had recommended some stuff. And then, I.D.M. said, "No, they didn't like that." So, they wanted us to go to this natural type. And so, they kinda got put off. And now, it's just getting worse and worse. And now, it's at a point where we're gonna have to do something or we're gonna lose it. Like I said, I don't wanna be crying wolf, but I'm, I'm just so afraid we're gonna have a real bad spring and we're gonna have a lot of rain that's gonna hit through there. Because everybody knows, if we get a big hard rain, it comes through there and it stacks up pretty hard. And it's gonna take us, it'll probably take us, I'm gonna make about three months to get it fixed, if we go ahead and approve the money and get it, get it going. Because we're probably gonna have to use some kind of a natural, you know, the natural process that I.D.M. requires, because we'll have to go back to I.D.M. again.
The creek is managed by I.D.M. and by the board of engineers. So, we have to seek approval. And I would like to do so, knowing that funding is already available to start that process.
It's, it's. Have you got any kind of estimate yet on that?
We've had a couple estimates. There was one about $87,000. We had one, it was like, I don't know, it was around $100,000.
I've asked J.T.L. to explore all possible options, including the live bank shore, the way that I.D.M. wants, but also looking at concrete retaining walls, decorative retaining walls. And again, largely depends on what I.D.M. tells us that we have to do. And last time, Tony said that they favored that live.
Right. We tried everything the last time and had all kinds of ideas and had engineers, or had, Bill Sagaster, he did all kinds of engineering for them. And they just come back and said, "No, you're gonna do the live," which is actually using the trees to lay it sideways and different vegetation. So, that's what we're looking at. But we do need to get it established as quick as we can.
Other questions?
Can we, can we do the $200,000 and then we can get an estimate maybe? And then, come back to the $78,000? Can we go ahead and get the 200? To make sure we get the park, to make sure we get the fence and the lighting, Make sure we get the park, make sure we get the fence and the lighting, make sure that that's nice and safe.
Certainly, you can always amend the amounts. That are all the ordinance.
And then we'll come back with, get an estimate and just come back and try and ensure it that way.
You can make a motion to amend and just say how, just say how you want to amend it.
I would like to make a motion to amend this ordinance to $200,000 to go to the park fencing and lighting and get some estimates on what it's going to take to fix the park, the surety up to Aziva.
So I have a motion to amend the ordinance to reduce the $278,476 to $200,000. Is there a second?
Second.
Second amendment. So right now, you're voting on the amendment. Or I guess you, can they just vote on the whole thing as amended? Yeah. Are there any other amendments that you wanted to make first?
I have a question. I know there was suspension. Playground equipment bought in 2019 that's still sitting somewhere and it's never been installed. I just, how come that hasn't been brought out to, I mean, it's brand new equipment.
So it's, it's kind of a hodgepodge of equipment, leftover things. And it's not, it's not accessible equipment. It's not a whole complete package of a park. And I had mentioned to Councilman Hester once that we recently received a donation of land. There's a couple of different places we might be able to use that equipment that we're looking at. We're doing an editorial to find out. One, we possibly have the Little League Park. And I've talked to Little League president about potentially putting a playground out at the Little League and using that equipment. Second, we received a land donation from Rick Wheeler. And a part of that land donation is bordering, it's sort of on top of the hill, bordering the Woodbridge Apartments and on top of the housing authority directors to see if they're interested, if that is a safe place to put it. If it's not too sloped, we may put some pieces there. So that equipment would likely go in one of those two locations.
It's just sat there for four years and I just hate for it to be paid for. And it's true that there should be being utilized somewhere. That's why I didn't know I'd never been put down in the park or anything.
I can answer every one. What happened, Ruth, is we were going to put in an additional pocket park. And then we bought some extra pieces. And over, over those last four years, those pieces don't fit where we've had people vandalize some of them. We go back to fix them using those parts and they don't fit. So that's why we're, like she said, we're trying to save them up and use them somewhere. Because like I said, they're good, they're good, they're staying there in the dry. So hopefully get those put down.
Other questions? It brings us, we'll call for a roll call vote on the amended ordinance. So to be clear, the amended ordinance reduces the $278,476 to $200,000. That's any change thus far. So calling for a roll call vote on the amended 2023 OR3 appropriation ordinance. Beau Bertram?
Hi.
Ruthie Jackson?
Hi.
BJ Steele?
Hi.
Hi.
Brian Hester?
Hi.
JT Cox?
Hi.
Having unanimous approval, so I would entertain a motion to suspend the rules in anticipation of second reading.
So.
I have a motion for Brian Hester. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Beau Bertram. Questions on that? Hearing none, roll call vote on the suspension of the rules. Beau Bertram?
Hi.
Ruthie Jackson?
Hi.
BJ Steele? Brian Hester?
Hi.
JT Cox?
Hi.
So calling for the second and final reading. Hester or Ruthie Jackson? What the sound is?
BJ Britney Spears.
Any questions? Hearing none, roll call vote on the second and final reading. Beau Bertram?
Hi.
Ruthie Jackson?
Hi.
BJ Steele?
Hi.
Hi.
Brian Hester?
Hi.
JT Cox?
Hi.
Unanimous, thank you so much. Now you have the ordinance. Do my check mark here so it doesn't play. 2023 OR4, amendment to the ordinance, 2022 OR16 on the salary ordinance. I believe that the only change on this was the adding, changing the supervisor position under the utility building office, correct?
Right, adding the utility building supervisor. They already raised the method changes, it's just the title.
So I already entertain a motion to approve 2023 OR4. I have a motion by Ruthie Jackson.
Second.
Seconded by Brian Hester. Questions? Hearing none. Calling for a roll call vote, Beau Bertram?
Hi.
Ruthie Jackson?
Hi.
BJ Steele?
Hi.
Hi.
Brian Hester?
Hi.
JT Cox?
Hi.
That is unanimous, so I'll entertain a motion to suspend the rules in anticipation of reading this thing tonight.
Second, so move.
I have a motion by Brian Hester. Seconded by Ruthie Jackson. Questions on that? Hearing none. I almost said all in favor again. Beau Bertram?
Hi.
Ruthie Jackson?
Hi.
BJ Steele? Brian Hester?
Hi.
JT Cox?
Hi.
That's unanimous, so then I entertain a motion for the second final reading of 2023 OR4.
So move.
I have a motion by Brian Hester. Seconded by Ruthie Jackson. Questions or discussion? Beau Bertram?
Hi.
Ruthie Jackson?
Hi.
BJ Steele? I think I heard an "I."
Hi.
Hi.
JT Cox?
Hi.
So that's unanimous. Thank you. All right, moving on to the resolutions. These were the resolutions that were tabled at the previous meeting. This is Resolution 2023, oh, 2023 R1, accepting the preliminary engineer's report. This is the one we had the public hearing on last time. Additional edits have been made to these documents to.
Please. You got, you're in a weird mode there, there.
I entertain a motion to approve Resolution 2023 R1. I have a motion by Ruthie Jackson. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Brian Hester. Any questions on approving the DER? Hearing none. Call for roll call vote. Beau Bertram?
Hi.
Ruthie Jackson?
Hi.
BJ Steele? Uh, Brian Hester?
Hi.
And JT Cox?
Hi.
So that is past unanimous, thank you.
And can I say something?
Yes.
A lot of things for you to ask. Any questions?
Sure, absolutely, yeah.
Thank you very much.
He was on in Paul Day.
Yeah, thank you so much.
And then also the Resolution 2023 R2. This is approving the authorized representative for the SRLF program. I believe this one was updated with council feedback as well. Entertaining a motion to approve.
So move.
Motion by JT Cox. Is there a second? Seconded by Ruthie Jackson. Any questions?
Just to be clear, this isn't giving him the, to go out and.
No, this is just submitting the application.
Right.
No, yeah, this is submitting application. And the council, of course, have final approval on any loans that are taken out.
We're not giving them a checkbook, right?
We're not giving them a checkbook, absolutely not. I don't really want it.
I vote no.
All right, so we're calling for a roll call vote on Resolution 2023 R2. Beau Bertram?
Hi.
Ruthie Jackson?
Hi.
BJ Steele? Brian Hester?
Hi.
JT Cox?
Hi.
That's unanimous, thank you. That gets us through our ordinance as a resolution. All right. Under New Business, first I would like to welcome Ellen Kelly from LifeSpring Health Systems Board for her only agenda for presentation.
Clearly, I'm not Ellen. We're actually here because Ellen asked us to come out. We're part of, I'm Dustin Hawkins.
I'm Melissa Berger.
And we're actually part of a series of loss teams, which is local outreach to suicide survivors. And we have launched one here with the help of LifeSpring at Clark County. And Ellen will talk more about that. But what we're also doing is we're also relaunching a suicide prevention coalition here for Floyd and Clark Counties. And the reason, and I'm going to read some of this because Ellen has wrote it down. So I think that's really good for us. So for the last 20 years in Indiana, the suicide rate has been higher than the national average despite the fact that suicide in the country is the country's most preventable form of death. If we come together as a community with education efforts, we can lower Indiana's and our, and our counties' both counties' rates. We're here to talk about several important suicide prevention efforts. And just like, like I said, we're talking about the launching of the Floyd-Clark Prevention Coalition. This is a group of community members who are interested in helping prevent suicides. Anyone can join. We will be mobilizing the community through education and use of resources to increase awareness and decrease stigma. So if you're so interested, please join us on Saturday, February 18th at Pearl Street Coffee House as we get together and talk about what we're going to do and the future of the coalition and how you can help.
Where'd you say it was at?
It's going to be at Pearl Street Coffee House Shop. I don't know the address. Is it on here? Yep, it's 405 Pearl Street in downtown Jeffersonville.
And so along with the Suicide Prevention Coalition, we are launching a loss team.
What time is that going to be?
10:00 AM.
10:00 AM.
A loss team, so lost stands for local outreach to suicide survivors. And our goal is to respond to scenes of suicide with the help of coroners and law enforcement officers to essentially provide resources to families who need something because they're in total shock, they don't know what to do. And so all of our resources will help them answer the questions like, how am I going to pay for this? Funeral homes, fire hazard cleanup, stuff like that. And so, like he said, with the help of LifeSpring Health Systems, we are launching our lost team. And we are the Spark Team. And that stands for Suicide Postvention Assistance Resources and Knowledge. And so we want to, like I said, provide resources to families because statistics show that anyone closely affected by suicide is 135 times more likely to go, to do the same thing. And so we want to try to prevent that in any way, shape, or form. So this team also, like the coalition, is looking for volunteers. If anyone wants to volunteer, we meet the third Tuesday of every month at noon. And that's a set in stone meeting. And we are launching at the end of February. We've already got buy-in from the Clark County coroner who is going to allow us to go on scene with him and just show us the on-scene process. So we learn a little bit about what to do and provide resources with, to the families.
God bless you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
And we've got flyers for vote if anyone's interested with all of the information on it.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bye, Elizabeth.
Okay. And then the council needs to formally adopt their, or approve their redevelopment commission appointees. BJ Steele and John Spencer, so we need a vote to do that.
I make that motion.
I have a motion by Ruthie Jackson. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Brian Hester, sorry. Any questions? Calling for a roll call vote, Beau Bertram?
Hi.
Ruthie Jackson? And BJ Steele?
Hi.
Hi.
Brian Hester? JT Cox?
Hi.
And then Thompson Street zoning. Tony, did you, or I think Ralph Kelly from Ralph has a presentation, so I'll call Ralph.
Hello. Hello. I have some handouts, so if you will grab one and pass it down. To that way, and go that way. Hi, I'm Kelly Scott, I'm Director of Housing. I also have here Dan Myle, our CEO. And we're happy to be here. I'll get you guys again. So we're hoping to get your support for Gunnison Ridge. It will be on Thompson Street. If you will hit the button. Ralph is a nonprofit, a community-based nonprofit based in New Albany. We have services spanning Clark, Floyd, Scott, Washington, Harrison, Jefferson, and Jackson Counties. We have many, many partnerships within the community, including many here in Charlestown. A lot of our clients go to church here. We have partnerships with the Greater Clark County Schools where we do involvement things with Disability Awareness Month, which is coming up in March. And also in New Albany with a community garden, with art therapy and music therapy. And we just hope to continue that partnership on around. We serve more than 1,400 individuals with their, and their families in Southern Indiana annually. So we have, we feel quite a big impact. And we like to imagine a community where everyone belongs, which I think is what you're trying to do here in Charlestown as well. We're pretty appreciative of that. In general, we have children's services, employment services, adult day programs, work services, and community living. As part of our community living program, we have 18 single-family homes in the Hawthorne-Glynn subdivision, technically in Charlestown near Solersburg, about 403. And those are affordably rented to individuals and families with disabilities. They are a very integrated part of the community there in Hawthorne Glen. And we, we love being a part of that neighborhood as well. We developed, owned, managed, and still maintain all of those houses. We also have a partnership with Blue River Services. They are our sister organization out west in Washington, Harrison, and Proctor Counties. And they have forayed quite a bit more into affordable housing. And we like to highlight some of their developments. One in Palmyra and one in Corvyn, but they have 13 with more on the way. In Pleasant Ridge in Charlestown, we have an option to purchase on 2.2 acres back behind the H&R block up the street on Thompson Street. And we hope to, following Charlestown's comp plan, to add to the diversity of housing in Charlestown and to provide four to six low to moderate income duplexes for low to moderate income residents here in Charlestown. And I think, I'm not, I'm not going out on a limb to say that Charlestown is growing hugely and already had a deficit in affordable rental housing and already had a higher than average for the area rental price before the pandemic. And now after the pandemic, that's only exacerbated. So we hope to try and make even just a little extent in that. According to 2020 census data, 46% of Americans spent more than 30% of their income on housing. And 23% spent at least 50% of their income. That means that you can't save for a house. That means that you can't spend your money at local businesses if you're paying too much in rent. So this does fit in with Charlestown's comp plan and with the residential community that we're looking to build in. Pleasant Ridge, as many of you know, is wonderful and has a diverse array of housing already. And we hope to just add to that. This does back up to Jonathan Jones Elementary School and the new middle school and the park on the other side. And we would hope to have a border of trees between Market Street and, between the development and Market Street. This is a preliminary site plan. Our plans have changed just a little bit and we're thinking more five duplexes probably. And we're also hoping to more, more integrated with the neighborhood so that each house has a driveway as opposed to this, which was really our very original plan a month and a half ago or so. So the original homes in Pleasant Ridge were Gunnison Homes. We are pretty proud of and just interested in the fact that Gunnison Homes were manufactured in New Albany, right next door to what is now Ralph's Fairmont Neighborhood Center. So we have that cool connection there. And we very much hope to integrate our development and our duplexes into the community at Pleasant Ridge, architecturally and otherwise. We plan rents approximately $400 to $700 per month. That is affordable for the median income in Charlestown and affordable for the income limits that we have right now. Of course, that could change as, you know, prosperity happens and inflation happens and things like that. We will continue to own, develop, and manage the property at all times. The difference, one important difference is that the rental income will pay our expenses for the ongoing development. So grants and loans fund the construction and acquisition of the property. But the ongoing expenses are paid by rental income with no subsidy, no, no underwriting after the property is in existence. Ralph is a local nonprofit and can help connect tenants and applicants with other things and the services if that's needed. We do also run criminal background checks, credit history checks. Tenants must have verifiable income that covers their rental expenses. So we're not housing for people with no family. We are housing for people with low to moderate income. And we hope that the development will not be targeted towards people with disabilities, but will be accessible to all. As we look towards Charlestown as well, we are making sure that everyone can use the development and the area, the housing, there's housing available for everyone. So this will be affordable housing, that is, it is housing that is affordable. It is not public housing. It is not housing that is subsidized directly for people with low or low income. This is housing that is affordable for the normal people in Charlestown. Mayor Hodges shared with me the, and it's public information as well, the average annual income of a Charlestown city employee. And that person would qualify to live at Gunnison Ridge as a single person or as a family of four. That does scale up. So as people are, as a family grows, as you have two incomes, things like that, there's a different income scale. Also, we do support public housing and public housing supports affordable housing. We have spoken with the Charlestown Housing Authority. They're very supportive of our efforts and think that this is the kind of housing that Charlestown needs. Specifically, this is the kind of housing that allows people to save up for homeowners. So if you're not paying 50% of your income in housing costs, then you can save up to buy that home. Even if that home right now feels unattainable, you can go to that. So in general, Ralph is a local nonprofit organization. We're seeking rezoning for those 2.2 acres on Thompson Street. those two point two acres on Thompson Street. And we plan to build five to six duplexes right now. Looking like five. And that will be creating housing that is affordable for Charlestown residents. The housing will be income restricted with no subsidy. We do run background checks. We do enforce rules and we do provide ongoing management. This is all in keeping with Charlestown's comprehensive plans for Pleasant Ridge and maybe. Any questions?
So I have a question on procedural things. So thank you, Kelly. Do you have any questions for Kelly?
Well, that picture you showed is not the picture you showed us the other night.
Which one?
Of what it's going to look like. That what they had, like the. They had the.
Two, two hundred.
That, that.
That is an original Gunnison Home advertisement.
But that's not what, I don't want people to be confused thinking that's what these are going to.
I'm sorry. No, that is a, an original Gunnison Home advertisement.
Okay.
That they used to advertise the homes that were built in Charlestown. We hope to harken back to that architecturally, but it's not going to look exactly like that. And, and you wouldn't necessarily want it to. You want it to look more modern.
That just doesn't look anything like what you showed us the other night.
No, that, that slide was on my slide the other night, but.
I'm just making sure I'm not confused it because I, I don't remember that one, but I remember what you showed us.
We don't have an architectural design, a schematic yet. So we're, we're very much in the planning stages. We're, we're asking for zoning. We're not asking for a development plan. But we are hoping to architecturally harken back to Gunnison Homes and, and to the Pleasant Ridge neighborhood.
Tony, could you speak to the process as far as the zone, you know, the planning commission, the, the zone request, the development plan, all of that? What happens?
That's a little bit like a subdivision. They're going to, you know, they're just getting the zoning now. They will have to bring the development plan back to the planning commission. That'll, at that time will show you the, how they're going to, the drives, the type of houses, the sizes and stuff like that, landscaping. And that's going to come back in front of the planning commission with that before they get any permits.
So the request tonight then is to do, is to approve a rezon from R.
From R to an R four.
R four.
Yeah. Because you wouldn't, you wouldn't expect somebody to spend the type of money they're going to have to for engineering until they, they're sure they get the zoning. That's, that's how that step works. That's in place.
So I would just like to mention, you know, this is quality affordable housing. We have emphasized that we not only develop and build, but we continue to manage property. Some, some people who develop things like this, they then contract with somebody else to come in and manage. But we're in the human service business. So we think that it's upon us to come in and manage it. We also have rules, you know, in the development. And, you know, we expect people who live there to follow those rules because we owe it to the other residents, neighboring residents to have those. So, you know, it's, it's quality affordable housing. Also, we're working very closely, well, with Blue River Services that Mel's mentioned. I've been CEO of Blue River for thirty-eight years. We have thirteen different developments. And so the staff there are working very closely with Kelly in developing this project. And we think it would be a great project for Charlestown.
Any other questions for Ralph? Thank you. So I would need a motion to approve the rezon request for Ralph from an R to an R four. Is there a motion to make the approval? Without a motion, the action will die, correct attorneys?
Yes.
It came with no recommendation. So it's up to the council. If there's no motion.
One time to call for the motion to approve the rezon for Ralph. Without a motion, the item fails. If there's no other business before the council tonight, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion?
Counsel, please.
Second.
So I have a motion to adjourn from JT Cox and a second from BJ Steele. I'll have to adjourn and say aye.
Aye.
Oh, sorry.
Aye.
Aye.
To do a roll call. Roll call, Bo Bertram?
Aye.
Ruthie Jackson?
Aye.
BJ Steele?
Aye.
Brian Hester?
Aye.
JT Cox?
Aye.
Okay. We adjourned.